Can you bring that to?
Hi Steve, it looks like it's four o'clock and we have everyone here if we want to go ahead and get started.
Yep, let's go ahead and do that. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This 23rd of July 2020. The next meeting will be Thursday, August 27, 2020 at 4:00 PM. Tim, can you put yourself on mute? Thanks. We are in a virtual meeting today. I'd like to first start off by swearing in the staff. All staff, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony about the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Introduction of commissioners. We'll do the roll call for commissioners. Commissioner Reeves. Commissioner Fleming. Tony?
Present.
Frank?
Present.
KB? It's not here, Doreen?
She's not here either.
Yeah, but squalling. Thought I saw him.
He's here.
Okay. The overview of the hearing formats. Persons wishing to address a commission on matters not posted in the agenda are invited to do so. However, the commission is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agenda items. Communication will be kept with a three-minute limit. Is anybody wishing to speak today on something that is not an application that we're going to hear today? If so, please make yourself known. Okay, seeing none, we will move on. I'd like to next have the approval of minutes for the last meeting. Have all the board members reviewed the last minutes for the last meeting? And if so, are there any corrections or changes, or do we have a motion to approve?
This is Frank, so moved.
This is Carrie Second.
That's moving second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Approval of minutes has been approved. Starting off, application UID 20-01-004A, 1347 North High Streets. Want to go ahead and staff, why don't you give us an update?
Yes, this is Patrick speaking. I'll go ahead and read the staff reports and then we'll let the public speak. We do have one, five people that are likely to speak in this case. And just FYI, there is going to be two motions on this, one for the zoning and then one for the design. I'll read them both and then we can have the public speak and then we'll have discussion after that.
Can I?
Hey Patrick, this is Tony. Just to clarify, is it my understanding that the applicant is looking for a vote on the variances first? And then second, hoping also to receive a vote on the certificate of appropriateness?
Call has been forwarded to an automatic voice.
That is correct. Okay, just want to make sure I understand what we're doing.
I want to, before you move on, I want to talk about that for a minute. Way we've done this always in the past is we have voted to support or not a variance or variance says. And then we let the public process run its course through the city boards. And then once they are successful, if they are successful in getting the variances, they've come back and we have put the time and effort into a final certificate of appropriateness. What we've done prior to the zoning or the variance vote was essentially give the applicant a warm and fuzzy that they were on the right track and we could support it, but that we held the work and the back and forth on the details and all that good stuff until at such time that they were successful with the variance. So I'm a little confused as to how we're doing support for.
Frank, you're reading my mind totally with you. That's why I asked.
Yeah, I don't know how we're doing.
I was going to wait until we got to that part to bring it up, but yeah, I'm in complete agreement.
Yeah, I would prefer to bring it up now because I think it's sort of a point of order here.
Fair, yep.
And I'd like to, because I can tell you right now that I am not ready to put in the time and effort to vote on a certificate of appropriateness until the zoning variances are successful.
And this is Tony. I concur with Frank's opinion.
Yeah, as the applicant, we have no issues with that.
Got it?
Great.
All right. So it looks like we'll just be hearing an update from staff on the zoning variances today. We can discuss if you like anything further after that, but we will not be making any decision on the certificate of appropriateness today. Patrick, you want to give us an update and then we'll go to the speakers from the public that want to speak?
Okay, yeah. So the applicant is proposing a mixed-use structure on the southwest corner of King Avenue and High Street. The site currently consists of five parcels totaling 1.04 acres. There are five potentially contributing structures on the site built between 1901 and 1947, which contain 16 units and 10,950 square feet of retail. The applicant's proposal will preserve, incorporate, relocate four of the five building structures as well as an 11-story building with 9,740 square feet of retail space and 210 dwelling units. The board previously reviewed proposal for an 11-story building with 11,663 square feet of retail space and 205 dwelling units. That application includes, excuse me, site plan elevations, renderings, building materials, and includes details on the preserved building storefronts and heights. To permit the proposed development, the following variances are needed. The applicant requests the council variance to permit first-floor residential and accessory residential uses, which are not above the commercial use. Excuse me. Standards, the applicant requests a variance to increase the maximum building height from 72 feet to 123 feet. And applicant is committed to the massing of the submitted elevations with predominant building height of 72 feet and maximum building height of 123 feet as depicted. Applicant requests a variance to reduce the required number of parking spaces by 15 from 261 to 246. Bicycle parking, the applicant requests a variance to allow bicycle parking in publicly accessible area, which is not visible from North High Street as depicted on the site plan. Last one is vision triangles. The applicant requests a variance to reduce the required clear vision triangle at the driveway from North High Street to the parking garage as depicted on the site plan. Notable, this is an entry-only access point and does not impair pedestrian and vehicular safety. Planning recommends support. The University District Plan 2015 recommends this area for regional mixed-use, which supports mixed-use corridors with the densest development and heights of up to 72 feet. The plan also states that the design of the new construction should be compatible with nearby contributing buildings and the surrounding streetscape, and that existing buildings that contribute to the district's diverse character be preserved. The proposal is consistent with the plan's recommendation to preserve existing buildings and contribute to the streetscape. Additionally, while the proposed height is 123 feet, preservation of historic buildings on the site setbacks from High Street and high-quality design mitigate any impact of the proposed height. Staff recommends support.
Thank you. Let's go through the speakers that have put in cards that wish to speak today. We'll first start with Susan Keeney. Susan, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Okay, actually, before we get started, what I'd like to do is I'm going to swear in all five speakers if they're here. Susan Keeney, Kathleen Fox, Tim Sublett, Adam Moskowitz, and Steve Russell. If you all would, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give as the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
I do.
I do.
I do.
I think that was fine. Susan, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, I'm Susan Keeney and I live on King Avenue, not far from the project site. I think tall buildings are exciting and can add drama to a city, particularly to a downtown. I'd like to see more tall buildings downtown. I'd also like to see more existing buildings kept and maintained to help create unique places in our city that have character and are well-loved. But we seem to look at property more as opportunity zones. This project, through all its various conceptual plans, has consistently maintained and even increased its bedroom count. The project started at 430 bedrooms and is now at 485 bedrooms. The very magnitude of this program has been the challenge all along for this site. It is too much for this site to handle, and I do not believe this is something you can design your way out of. At the very least, the partial facades of the corner commercial building are being kept and I hope not altered too greatly with new window details. But the other historic structures, including that little service station, will be demolished. And in each of their places, the proposed development will have one single large building taking up pretty much the entire block. What's left to create a sense of place that the community can love? Merely replicating buildings that are demolished is not authentic or honest. It's not preservation and it's not proper replacement for the vibrant eclectic mix of buildings that are represented in this early 20th century commercial block. Now, I'm not saying that the block can't evolve, can't move on to the next increment of development. But what is presented in this project is a drastic revolution, evolution, sorry. The program is too much for the site to bear. Context matters. There's more than the High Street corridor to deal with. This unique site directly abouts a beautiful historic residentially scaled neighborhood on all three sides. And with a project of this size and magnitude, there's just not a lot of breathing room to buffer it or to create a sympathetic transition into the neighborhood. This is especially to run the South property line with the 11-story tower component. A question which has been asked and not adequately answered is, how does this project benefit the neighborhood? We know that projects have to make money to be successful, but that is not really ours to know or to review. What we can review are the variances being requested and the relationship of the building to the site and how it complements the surrounding neighborhood. That too is critical for the long-term success of a project. I encourage the review board to not approve the variances for the project that is before you tonight and to continue to work with the applicant to whittle this project into something that makes sense for the developer, feels right in the context of the neighborhood, and is successful for the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, next, I just want to remind all the speakers that try to, please, if you can, try not to repeat other speakers and try to keep it at two minutes. Next, we'll call on Kathleen Fox. Kathleen?
Yes, my name is Kathy Fox. I'm a resident and chair of the Dennis and Place Neighborhood Association zoning committee. Our committee reviewed this proposal in the context of the University District Plan, the design guidelines, and urban design checklist. CDG's proposal fails to meet many of the plan's goals, guidelines, and guiding principles, and therefore, we urge you not to approve it. In the interest of time, I want to mention just a few. The proposal fails to meet the University District's plan's guiding principle number seven to promote preservation and rehabilitation of existing buildings that contribute to the district's diverse character. This proposal is largely for demolition and replacement, not preservation and rehabilitation. Guiding principle three requires that new development minimize adverse impacts to adjacent residential neighborhoods. This 11-story proposal is completely out of scale with the adjacent low-intensity residential, which consists of two-story historic houses and townhouses. The University District Plan states that care should be taken to mitigate off-site impacts due to a building's height and mass, and specifies that along rear frontages, floors above three stories or 35 feet should be set back at least 20 feet from the property line. This includes rear facades facing alleys and those directly adjacent to other parcels. This proposal places an 11-story, 123-foot tall tower immediately adjacent to an existing two-story neighborhood. Similar developments referenced by the developer are located next to more compatible zoning, while at the same time being within the current 72-foot height limitation on High Street in the University District. The uncommon is next to institutional use. The Lux Bell is next to higher intensity residential. The High Line on Nine is next to higher intensity residential. And the Short North developments that CDG calls out as comparable are not immediately adjacent to historic two-story residential, and they're not within sight of this project. We ask you to follow the University District Plan and vote no on both the zoning variances and the design. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Next, Tim?
I am Tim Sublett, president of the Dennis and Place Neighborhood Association. Just prior to this meeting, I convey to you documentation of a resolution passed unanimously at our March meeting in opposition to the King and High project. This was an unprecedented action for DPNA, which prides itself on working positively with developers, including one large-scale project now under construction where our involvement is credited with making the plan better. To attach the NIMBY label to our current opposition is to misread our record. How did we reach the point of that resolution? I recall that CDG was advised at an early review by this body to talk to the neighborhood. Indeed, we have met and met and met. The reason for the impasse is simple. The proposal is too big for the site and CDG has refused to modify their expectations. Negotiations have been limited to secondary issues and no agreement has been reached. More recently, CDG declined a proposal that the neighborhood could support. We offered to support a larger parking variance, in other words, a reduction in the number of required parking spaces, combined with a reduction in the number of bedrooms that would put the height and scale in proportion to our historic neighborhood and this portion of High Street. CDG said no. In response, they offered sight unseen, take it or leave it, to make the whole project 85 feet. Because CDG would not share sketches of this idea or delay this hearing on their 11-story proposal, we had no choice but to say no to what did not seem like a serious offer. So here we are. The fact that a developer finds himself deeply invested in a project does not give him the right to carry a project that is inappropriate or objectionable to its lasting damaging fruition. Consider those who have worked, who for years and decades have invested in their neighborhood. These neighbors will be negatively affected by this development. Please take into account their opposition, just as the university area commissioners did in voting down CDG's zoning request last week. The people of Dennis and Place deserve that consideration. They have shown a commitment to their neighborhood by undertaking the challenging pursuit of local historic district designation, and they deserve a respectful transition between that proposed district and High Street. Not an oversized development housing more than 70% above zoning restrictions that walls off the district and moreover removes buildings, particularly the auto garage, significant to the history of the corridor. Please join us in opposition to this project.
Thank you, Tim. Adam, please proceed.
Okay, you can hear me. My name is Adam Moskowitz and I live at 1356 Hunter Avenue. I'm a member of the Dennis and Place Neighborhood Association, and I'm speaking as a resident and on behalf of like-minded neighbors. You've been asked to recommend a height variance that is more than 70% over the zoning limit. To consider this only as a High Street issue is to turn your back on our historic neighborhood. Considering High Street alone, there are no buildings of comparable height even in sight of King and High. CDG claims to benefit the neighborhood through historic preservation, which they offer as justification for the height increase. Yet their plan only saves a few facades of contributing structures or incorporates a few elements into the new construction reminiscent of the buildings they plan to demolish. You have received letters regarding this from Preservation Ohio and Columbus Landmarks. Quoting the Columbus Landmarks letter, retention of a portion of the building's facades and reuse of architectural elements in the proposed concept are design features, but not historic preservation nor adaptive reuse based on the Secretary of the Interior's standards. CDG provided a traffic study that fulfills the city's minimum requirements, but does not reveal the full impact on the neighborhood. We've spoken to the traffic engineers who executed the study. The conversation made clear that their focus was on King and High and not on recommendations to reduce traffic on neighborhood streets. This isn't about the 250 cars that will go to and from the parking garage at rush hour. This is about the 250 cars, plus the Amazon deliveries, garbage pickups, Ubers, pizza deliveries, and visitors for 500 residents. None of these vehicles will exit the building on King Avenue or High Street because the road patterns prohibit it. Vehicles will travel on neighborhood streets and alleys at all times of day and night. Please consider our interests and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. And then lastly, we have Steve Russell.
Hello, my name is Steve Russell. I live at 50 Clark Place, a few doors down from this proposed project. This proposal is for an overwhelming building of 11 stories. It will cast morning shadows negatively impacting the entire neighborhood. This will be especially bad in the winter when we really need any available sunshine. I know there are shadow studies in the documents that the applicant provided, but they cherry pick the times of day so that it looks like there won't be any negative effect on the neighborhood. I'd also like to talk about this timeline. CDG complains at every public meeting that the zoning process is taking too long. Yet the applicant that has asked to table, and they've asked to table the votes multiple times, whenever they think they don't have the votes. Of course, that's their right, if they don't think they have the votes, to defer and table their own application. But they shouldn't then blame others for the amount of time the zoning process is taking. This same approach has also prevented real discussions with the neighborhood. Each time our neighborhood talks with CDG, they say there isn't enough time to really look at alternatives because they must get their zoning approval right away. So on to the next meeting. Then at the next meeting, they again ask to table their application if they don't think they have the votes. They delay this process themselves, having already cut off any opportunity to work through new ideas. So therefore, I ask you to vote, please vote no today on both the zoning variances and the design. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we will hear from Collegiate Development Group. I'm not sure who's going to be speaking for them today.
Great. Brandt from Brandt Stiles from Collegiate Development Group will be representing the applicant.
Hold up, hold up. Brandt, have you been sworn in?
I have not, no.
Okay. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give as the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please continue.
Great, wonderful. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, commissioners, for your time this afternoon. It's been a while since we last met, so I figured I'd spend a couple of minutes reviewing over some of the takeaways from our last meeting. A couple of the takeaways that we had from our last meeting, you know, the configuration of the townhomes, what was actually occurring inside, street level, door locations, the location of the tower and the view from Clark Place condos along High Street. So it's part of the presentation today, and I'm going to try to get through this presentation as quickly as I can. I think there's a lot more value in having a discussion and talking through it, but I do want to highlight some of the central changes and just talk about the progression. So I will go through it. I know you guys have a packet that you've probably already gone through, so I don't want to harp on too much and potentially just address your concerns or questions, so.
Let me stop you for one minute. Let's try to keep it, since we're not going to be talking about the certificate of appropriateness or design, let's try to keep it to what we're going to be looking at and discussing today, which are the zoning variances.
Absolutely. All right, perfect. Yeah. You know, since this is a pandemic, it's really shaken up everyone's lives and, you know, a little bit of silver lining on this is, you know, over the last three months, we have had a little bit, had more time to pause and to engage with the community. And, you know, there's some people in the community that says that we have not made changes, and there was a response a second ago that says that we were always rushing and tabling. We're rushing and tabling because we're tabling because we want to make changes and we want to incorporate changes. And if you go back to that last slide, you guys can see that, you know, we've had eight different iterations based on comments and feedback that we've received from different stakeholders, whether it was UIDRB, UAC zoning committee, or from members of the community. So for others, for the community to say that we haven't been responsive or that we haven't been listening or that we've just been trying to push a project through, I wanted to be able to show everybody that we don't feel that way. If you go to that next page, we spent the last, you know, significant amount of time, really a lot of it was happening during the pandemic, and whether it was virtual meetings, meeting with, you know, the Dennis and Place zoning committee, Clark Place condos. What we wanted to do is just really quantify the amount of communication that we have had with the neighborhood. As you can see, the email correspondence, and specifically with Dennis and Place. They've been opposed to the project really since the beginning. We've sat down with them several times. This is a list of the items that they've addressed. We've created a legend. The ones in dark green are the ones that we've addressed and we believe are resolved. The ones in light green are addressed. They haven't really agreed to it, but it's, we believe they are resolved, and there's some open conversations going on on one or two of them. So I want there to be communication. I want to be able to show that, hey, we really have tried. The biggest issues I think that are really coming up are density and not meeting the University District Plan. You guys saw a plan that we had that was a six-story plan that did not require a height variance. But, and that plan right there had actually more square footage and more bedrooms than what we're proposing today. And then as it relates to not being in compliance with the University District Plan, we've gone through the checklist and we believe that we are in compliance. City stats gone through the checklist and they've said that they believe that we're in compliance as well. So we haven't been able to resolve every issue. I don't think that we ever will be able to. But we have made material changes to address almost all of them. We've really focused our time working with Dennis and Place to understand their concerns and find the solutions. There has been some social media campaigns and email campaigns against the project that have resulted in a lot of communication to you guys. We haven't gone that route. We've really tried to spend the time focusing on trying to make the project better. So going to the fourth, fifth slide, if we could, just overall, like project benefits, you know, adding needed housing to an area, to a market that has a significant amount of housing constraint. It's a very diverse housing mix. We're eliminating the light along King High and Wall, high-quality development, bearing power lines, improving the streetscape, increasing lighting and safety. On the first floor plan, which is on slide six, one thing that was addressed in our last meeting was, you know, the use of the Sawtooth Building. Previously, we had the Sawtooth Building as our leasing office and amenity space. And there was a comment by one of the commissioners that what was going on, what was going on on the inside wasn't representative of what looked like on the outside. So we really took that to heart and we actually made a significant change and we moved our leasing office down to the south on High Street. And now those townhomes are truly representative of actual townhomes. Second comment that we received from you guys last time we were in front of you was, you know, a need or a desire to see, you know, first-floor door locations. So we've spent some time incorporating those door locations into it. We've also, through conversations with Dennis and Place and other stakeholders, we've incorporated our trash room, a loading area within the building, fully screen the transformers for Clark Place so they don't have to see anything as relates to the transformer. And we've also incorporated a 10-foot easement agreement for Clark Place to allow them to utilize the southernmost portion of our property in perpetuity for their benefit. There's some survey issues with the property, and our property actually encroaches into some land that's being used right now by Clark Place. And we wanted to make sure that they were able to preserve their backyards. If you go to the next page, this is just, this is our rendering. There haven't been. this is just, this is our rendering. There haven't been significant changes to this since the last time that we were in front of you. But one thing that we did really want to just really address is just the relief that these step backs above the first floor, fourth floor are doing. The relief is really helping accentuate the first story, the older buildings that we're preserving. And it helps improve the streetscape and the pedestrian friendliness. One of the comments last time was the desire to see the Clark Place condos in association with our rendering because it was a rendering that we didn't have previously. And as you can see on the top left side, we've rendered in our building to the Clark Place. And one thing that I'd like to point out is, you know, we incorporated a step back along the fourth floor to really help our building be more contextual with the other buildings in the area. And based on the height of the Clark Place condos and the step back on that fourth floor, I really think it helps from an overall contextual perspective. And then on the picture that's to the right, you know, top right, you can see the separation between Clark Place and our building. All of that space in between will be an easement for the Clark Place owners to utilize as their green space in perpetuity. And then the other images below just show just that the activity and, you know, pedestrian friendliness of that first floor. If you go to the next page, it's just a street state comparison, you know, where, what's there now to what we're proposing. And if you go to the next one, this is just to identify, you know, historic preservation and what we're doing. There were some requests by planning staff for us to actually detail out what our proposal was. So it was very clear. So we've created elevations and before and after elevations for the King and High Building, for the Exterminator Building, for the Sawtooth Townhomes, and for the gas station. I don't know if the gas station was part of the preservation approach previously, but we are actually bringing a portion of the gas station, preserving specific components of it and replicating the rest. Along, it will be actually the entrance to our parking garage along the rear. It was one way to pay tribute to it. We've also communicated and agreed to if someone can find land for this, we are 100% willing and committed to paying for a relocation of this building instead of putting it on to the back portion of our property. The next page, these are just elevations. City staff asked us to expand and enlarge these elevations. So we've done that. The next four pages are the elevations. If you go to that fourth page, I think it's page 18, it does show you the gas station onto the back portion of that property. Something we think is really cool. Residents that are driving in and out are actually going through the garage doors of that gas station on a daily basis to get into the garage, something that's neat and just pays homage to what was previously there in a unique manner. And then the last page, which really isn't relevant today, is a materials board that I don't really need to talk about. But, you know, just in closing, overall, we believe this is a beautifully designed building that takes into consideration, you know, a tremendous amount of stakeholder input in the layout and the design. You know, while we admit that it's not perfect, no project ever is. We hope that the board sees that we've, you know, we've really listened and responded to the community's concerns and their views with this project and really view this project as a win for the city of Columbus. And we please ask you to vote to approve our variances this afternoon.
Thank you. I'll now open it up to Commissioners for comments or questions.
Can I ask staff to explain to us the variances before we get into any of the specifics? Because as I understand it, they're not going for a commercial plan development, which would allow for very specific commitments in terms of design and scale and that sort of thing. These are variances. So the height variance that they're after, that will somehow be described as only in a particular area on the site? Or it'll be broadly? How will the variances be applied to the property? Is, I guess, my question of staff.
So this is Jackie Yeoman, and I am not going to be answering that question, but I need to chime in to say that Patrick has lost his audio. And so we probably need to give him a second to... Oh, you got it back. Okay, wonderful. Sorry.
I got it back, but I did miss that initial conversation that was discussing the variances being voted on and not the actual certificate of appropriateness. So I apologize. I missed that part of the conversation. But I am back on audio now.
Okay, Patrick, what I'm trying to understand is, since this is not CPD, where all these things can be very specific, right? Since it's variances, council variances and/or wherever the variances are going, how will they be described? So they're asking for a height variance. It will just be described on a particular area? Or what, how is this all going to be administered is what I want to understand?
So Jackie, excuse me. If you have anything to add on this, please do. But it's my understanding that these variances are associated with this particular design. And for this design to move forward, the variances are needed to be approved before this design can receive a certificate of appropriateness. So the 100, for example, the 123-foot variance is associated directly with this design package?
Yeah, this is county. I don't think that's the question Frank's asking. I think he's asking that if the variance in height of 123 feet was granted, what is it that indicates where that variance is applied? Within the limits of the South Tower or across the site in its entirety?
Steve, do I have the ability to respond to this?
I'm sorry?
I need staff.
Let's go staff.
Absolutely.
This is Jackie Yeoman. First of all, I'm just going to recommend, Patrick, that you bring up the staff report because it shows the variances. And I think that'll be helpful for people to see. And I actually would need to see them again to be able to even try to answer the question.
Yep. Those are the variances that are needed for this site plan and design.
Right. So Patrick, do you remember, or Christopher's on the line too, do either of you remember if there's limitation text associated with this? And the applicant probably can actually answer this. So I would, you know, say to the board that you might want to let the applicant respond because they're working directly with Building and Zoning Services on this. And we are commenting on the appropriateness, but the zoning is actually regulated through a different department. So they could chime in, you know, it's going to be based on any limitation text and what is included in the zoning. So the applicant can probably answer it a little bit better than we could.
Limitation text is for rezones though, not for variances, as I understand it.
Oh, you are, yes, that's correct. Yes. Sorry, can you scroll?
I'll just comment. So CVs can have essentially a limitation text. And so what this does is create a box of what they can build in. The COA would govern all the actual designs that follow, including materials. But the CV specifically says here that the applicant is committed to the massing of the submitted elevations with a predominant building height of 72 feet and maximum 123. So it's creating that box that this building, as shown, would fit within.
So Christopher, would that, let's say that they get that passed. And let's say through design, we want to move the 123-foot building. We, you know, that we don't agree with the location they have it in, for example. Is that something that would then force a going back for a variance? Or is that within our purview?
So potentially, based on the write-up of the CV, it sounds like they would need to come back for revision to their council variance if you wanted the height elsewhere.
Okay. And in this variance, there is no provision for quid pro quo in terms of lowering the height limit for the remainder of the site. Let's say that, you know, let's say we would accept the 123 feet in some location, but the quid pro quo was that the rest of the site had to be 40. You know, is that, is that... You know, I'm having trouble supporting a variance to 123 feet when everything else just remains as it's already allowed.
So, yeah, I mean, this is Yeoni. I mean, I guess I have the same question. At the end of the day, the... I'm not sure I understand what benefit there is to the public in the granting of the variance. They're asking for an additional 50 feet in height. So about a 67% increase upon what the university area plan allows. And there does not, to my eyes, seem to be any distinct benefit as a kind of trade-off to that allowance.
I think Steph viewed the original intent of allowing, potentially allowing, additional height tied really to that preservation element. And so...
What preservation element? I'm a little confused. As an architect in a firm that specializes in historic preservation, what I see is two facades of a corner building being reduced to the depth of a brick and other buildings promised to be replaced in time. And if anyone is familiar with the work of historic preservation, you understand that you can't just rebuild a historic building in time because you can't get access to the same kind of materials. You don't have access to the same craft or skills or anything else. So I have a hard time understanding how any of this qualifies as historic preservation as someone who is intimately familiar with the standards of the Secretary of the Interior.
The plan calls for elements, I believe, of preservation. So there isn't, you know, demolition control in this area in the same way that there are in the historic districts within the city. And so when we view these kinds of things, and just to be clear, the corner building is not to the depth of the brick. I believe it was 10 to 20 feet of actual building protected within. The other ones are...
Show me that on a drawing.
And we can. We can show you that. This was discussed at previous meetings, I believe, as well.
It was, but that's not what that floor plan shows.
I can let the applicant answer that, but that is what our understanding of that corner building is.
Yeah, well, I guess I'm suggesting maybe your understanding is a little incomplete. But I do agree that the applicant should probably respond to the comments.
Brandon?
Can I allow Tim Bass?
Yes, please do.
To respond to this?
Yep.
My name is Tim Bass. I don't know if we need to be sworn or...
Yes, you do. Do you swear a firm testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Thank you.
Okay, please continue.
So we have gone back and forth on semantics with, you know, whether we're doing preservation, adaptive reuse, or simply trying to be sensitive to a streetscape. There's no preservation component in the plan and there's no demolition control. And so what we, but what we did commit to early on in the process is a sensitivity to the corner and to the other smaller buildings that compose this 19th century streetscape. And in order to do that, we have to step back and allow them room to breathe. We resisted the, sort of, as we call it, the facadeectomy. Nothing is laminated onto the large mass. It's set back 20 feet at the corner from High Street and 12 feet from King Avenue. And the rest of High Street, the bulk of the building is set back 12 feet. And I think that's eight feet more than the Exterminator Building. And on the rear, where we were previously looking at a donut, a sightline-to-sightline donut, we actually have pulled the center back almost 40 feet. And so there's a bit of breathing room towards the neighborhood. And the cost of that, of course, is square footage. And so in order to allow the project to breathe in the areas we want to see those old relationships, we had to create density elsewhere. And so we are caught in this sort of hutch 22 where we find a community interest in these buildings and that streetscape. And when we respond to it, we're told it's not preservation. So we didn't set out to do historic preservation. We set out to be sensitive to a streetscape and maintain as much of that character as we could.
Thank you.
So we get caught up in the semantics of preservation when we're really talking about the streetscape and massing at the scale of that street and the history, you know, in as much as what we're looking at.
If I may?
Yep.
I'd like to reduce this down to the issue of variances, not whether, not what you just talked about, Tim, which I understand all the different nuances of that. But, you know, for me, I think it's possible to put a 123-foot building potentially on this site. I'm not sure exactly where it's possible. And I've said it in the past that I don't think the south end of the site is the location for it. But, you know, but I think it's possible to do 123-foot portion of this site. But I think it would have to be accompanied with a equal reduction of overall building height on the rest of the property. In other words, there would have to be something like 40, 45 feet for the rest of the property and 123 feet for the tower. And then we would, through design, figure out where the tower needs to be. You know, I can, there's certainly a number of locations you could put a tower on this property. I'm not convinced that the location that you've been absolutely insistent on, I still don't understand why, is being in the exact location that certainly I would be unacceptable. And so that's, so if a variance could be put forward that was for a 123-foot tower of the same footprint size as this, location to be determined, and a reduction of the height limit for the rest of the property down to, say, 45 feet, I'm just throwing a number out, then I think that that could be something that I'd be willing to discuss as a support for a variance like that. And then that gives us the flexibility through the design review to come up with a good project. And I don't think it has anything to do with whether the existing buildings are used or not used or whatever. I think it only has to do with scale. And that's kind of the way I look at it.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from committee members?
I agree with this is Carrie that I don't necessarily object to the height, but you're proposing it in the location that the neighbors, I think quite frankly, understandably, find most objectionable. Secondly, with a gas station structure, I appreciate you trying to find a home for it. I think that taking what arguably is one of the coolest buildings on the site existing and then relegating it to this subservient use on the alley is kind of a slap in the face to the building. I mean, I'm not suggesting it be torn down, but I'm hopeful that it can remain intact somewhere. Just seems kind of like a bastardization of that building that's going to be tremendously underappreciated in the alley. So.
The last thing I would say is that, looking at this elevation that you've got up, I like some of the articulation that you've done. I, I like some of the articulation that you've done on the tower with it stepping back. But if you go north of that to the corner of King, it's kind of going in and out a little bit, but there's no vertical articulation. And I don't know if Frank would agree that, if, you know, that's just one big flat plane. And if, if the tower were able to move, and there could be some vertical articulation, I think it would be a much more interesting building for the street.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from commissioners? Seeing none, we have three options. First option is request a motion for approval. Second option is agree to take no action today. Or third option is to table it, but the applicant must agree. Is there a motion, request for a motion for approval, or to table, or agree to take no action at this time? Applicant, would you like us to take a vote on it today?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Yes, sir. This is Mike Shannon. I have not been sworn in.
Do you swear affirm the testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir, I do. I would just like to take, take a, a brief minute to address Frank's concerns and the other speaker's concerns. And then I believe we'd like you to call the question on the zoning package. And I'm waiting for confirmation of that via text from my client.
Okay.
Frank, Frank brought up, Frank did bring up an excellent point that we are trying to accomplish here. But we would agree that we would limit the 123-foot portion to basically no more than 25 lineal feet of our frontage. And again, only 14% of that structure is above the 72-foot height limit. We would craft the variance to ensure that that would remain a constant. With respect to the quid pro quo, which is not a popular term anymore, to lower the existing, or the other elements of the building, the remaining 75% to something lower than 72-foot is a little bit problematic only from the following reason. And that is the, the Heights District is 72 feet. So we do have, as a matter of right, the ability to, to build to the 72-foot height. And I don't think a variance would allow us, at least at this juncture, to commit to a structure that would be less than what the code's minimum is. And I guess I misspoke. I apologize. I said 20, I meant 25% of the, of the lineal frontage, not 25 feet, and it's actually 60 feet of frontage. I apologize for that detail. So the bottom line is, is we'd be amenable to variance language that turns in specifically on the, the taller portion. And that would give flexibility for the possible relocation of that element through the subsequent process that could be taken up, you know, today or at a later date, about that, location of that. And then I hear what Frank is saying, that an equitable quid pro quo may be to lower above the 72 feet, but that does not require a variance, and the minimum Heights District is 72 feet. So I think of all the variances, and I don't need to go through them all again, sir, the use variance, that residential on the first floor, a de minimis parking variance, de minimis setback variances and, and small vision triangles, only for the entrance features. Those are things that I think are mundane variances, and the standard is practical difficulty. With respect to the height, it's the same standard. We don't have to show hardship. We do have to show a practical difficulty. And we'd be willing to limit the increased height to proportionate to that, what you see today. And with that, sir, I thank you for the chance to respond. And if given a second, I could check to see if I'm authorized to call the question. Is that acceptable, sir?
Well, we're going to go ahead and probably ask for it now. If you're, if you're not sure, we'll ask for a request for motion for approval. So do we have a request for motion for approval? Is there a request at all from committee members for a motion for approval at this time?
Well, motions have to be affirmative, so it, it doesn't, by doing that, it doesn't mean we're going to vote for it. It just means that we're calling the question, correct?
But my understanding is it needs to be someone that puts up the motion in a second for us to vote on.
Mike, you getting a response?
I'd been told I was on mute. I, I hope that wasn't the case. Did I? Okay. I'm gonna, okay.
You have my authorization to tell them to vote.
I apologize. I didn't get, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead for a motion to vote on approval. Do we have a motion?
Okay, I mo, I moved that we approve the, or no, I moved that we recommend to, is it counsel?
I believe so.
Support, support on the variances in question.
Okay. Do we have a second?
This is Kiony, seconded.
Okay, that's a motion and a second. All in favor, you're going to list your name. All in favor, please say your name.
Wait, isn't there any discussion?
I'm sorry?
Isn't there any discussion?
Okay, first, who is this speaking?
This is Pasquale.
Oh, I, that, didn't we have, just have discussion?
After the, the motion's been seconded generally, there's opportunity for discussion.
Okay.
Steve, it's okay.
Okay. Go ahead.
So my point is, to raise Frank's point once again, is does this vote require us to accept the proposal as is? Just as a point of clarification.
I think it, I think it, go ahead, Kiony.
Go ahead, Mike.
I, I think it specifically puts the tower in the location as, as submitted, yes. If that's what you're asking. Is that what you're asking?
Yes, yes, it is, and thanks.
I think, I think it does, yes.
Because I'm in agreement with Kiony about the location of the tower, not the height, but the location of the tower.
Okay, any other further discussion before we call the vote? Okay, all in favor of the motion, please state your name. All opposed to the motion, please state your name.
Kiony, opposed.
Carrie, no.
Pasquale, no.
And I am a no also. Motion has not been approved.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next case, case number 234 East 17th Avenue for windows for Columbus Realty Source.
Mr. Chairman, can we please have a motion to officially table the second part of C O A?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. We can.
Item number two.
Seconded.
That's a motion and a second to table for the certificate of appropriateness. All in favor, say aye or your name.
Frank, aye.
Carrie, aye.
Kiony, Kiony, aye.
Pasquale, aye.
I also. That motion has been tabled. I'm sorry, that application has been tabled. Now, our next case, 234 East 17th Avenue, Columbus Realty Source. Patrick?
Yep. All right. The applicant is proposing to replace and refurbish windows in an existing historic structure on all sides of the building with earthwise casement and earthwise double slider windows in black vinyl. The building is falling into disrepair and has, and will have portions of the building converted into bedrooms, which require egress. Each window will fit the original window opening and be almost identical in appearance as well as color inside the structure. The original windows are black lead lined steel and will be refurbished to their original condition if not indicated for replacement. The front middle window was originally planned to be converted into a casement window to provide egress for a planned bedroom. The applicant has since decided that this area of the house will no longer be converted into a bedroom, and instead of replacing the window, it will be refurbished to the original condition. Staff recommends approval. The university district plan recommends original windows and doors should be preserved, and when necessary, the original design proportions should be maintained. The proposed windows are accurate in representation of historic windows. Additionally, staff has consulted with historic preservation officers to ensure the proposal is appropriate. Staff recommends approve.
Thank you. Scott Whelan, have you been sworn in?
No, I haven't.
Okay. Do you swear affirm the testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. You want to give us updates from the last time we spoke?
Yeah, nothing, so I know there's some, I think Frank had some questions. I checked with the window guy. They don't make a process on these windows where they can put the outside mullions on that, on these windows. And so I did check also on that. You wanted to expand them, the center bar. I'm within, I checked, within a half inch of the existing being the front, so I think we're pretty close. So hopefully those are the two questions I know you had for me. Again, we took out that front window just to keep the character that front of that house. You know, you can see in this picture you see right now, we're, we're left with just a three at the top and three on the third floor. That's the front of the house. I don't think anything else has changed. Those sliders are only in the basement where you can't see them. Regress, so they're underground. There's an example of the window that we're going to put in. So it mimics like that fourth floor. The third floor, the grid pattern will change to the lead. So the grid pattern will change to the, to the, whatever the lead pattern is on the third floor. So that's an example of fourth floor. There's a good example of the elevation of the front. There's actually another one. The next one shows the side. No, not that one. No. Keep going. All right, there. That's the best elevation you can see of the front. So we're not changing anything in the front. Sevens don't change. It's just the As. Three at the top and three on the third floor, right by the chimney, on either side of the chimney. And right above that, that coop in the front that comes out. And those are all existing bedrooms. So I don't think there's anything else you need from me.
Okay. Thank you. Open it up for comments or questions from the board.
I think the applicant has done a good job. Thank you.
Agreed.
Other comments or questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion for approval?
I moved to approve the application as submitted.
Do we have a second?
Kiony.
A second.
That's a motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say your name.
Carrie, aye. Frank, aye.
Pasquale, aye.
Kiony, Kiony, aye.
That's unanimous, aye.
Appreciate it.
Motion is approved.
Gonna make this building look good again.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next case, 1581 North High Streets. Patrick?
Yeah, give me a second. Let me just pull up the application. The applicant is proposing interior fit out and minor exterior modification to an existing mixy's building. The fit out will be for a co-working office and OSU digital lab. Existing recessed entry storefront system will be replaced with a new entry flush with the exterior facade. Existing mosaic tile and base tile surrounding the existing storefront will be replaced with cord and steel plate. Existing storefront windows will be painted to match the new entry. A black painted steel channel frame will support an internally lit channel sign with a white face and green returns at the main entrance of the building. The sign's three foot tall and 10 foot wide. Additionally, a 30-inch diameter blade sign with dimensional letterings and outer ring will be bonded to the existing facade. The sign is approximately nine square feet. Entry doors will be painted green. New 24 by 30 windows will be installed on the west facade. A black fabric awning with a logo on the valance will be installed over the west service entrance and will be painted green. Staff is generally supportive of the proposal. The university district plan encourages a variety of uses for this area, including office space, and encourages adaptive reuse of existing buildings. Building materials are of high quality and have been influenced by the predominant pattern of the area. Staff recommends approval with conditions. Blade signs be between four to 10 inches high, six square feet, and be covered with an escutcheon plate, excuse me. That, that's all, yep.
Thank you.
Swear, I think Tim lies on, and then I'm not sure if John Fleming's on or not, but.
John cannot make it today, so just me.
Okay, okay. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right, please continue.
So just want to give you guys a quick update of some of the stuff that we talked about last time. And then I do have a, just a clarification on the, on the blade sign, but that, but we'll, we'll get there. So the primarily two things that we talked about last time, one is, well, really maybe three things, but one, one of the things that we have some concern about last time about the core ten panel. And I think we agreed to provide a pre-weather panel so they would not create excessive stain. And the, and on top of that, actually, the good news is that the existing building actually has a three feet of a brick paving in front of the building. So, you know, so that, that helps a little bit also. Because, you know, obviously, brick and, and the core ten, you, you, you can't tell the difference. It helps a lot. The other things that we talked about was this, you know, to give you guys a better idea of the storefront. So in our rendering, we actually show what the interior is going to look like through the glass. So if you go down to maybe one of the last page, yeah, this one's, yeah. So you'll see that, you know, in the, in the, in the main entrance, we have open seating and, you know, bankhead and things like that behind it. And then you also see the, the booth seating on the other side with a little orange and wood sled kind of, kind of, you can kind of see through now. In reality, the glass will be quite reflective, so it may not be as, as clear as what this rendering showed. The last thing that, that we talked about last time was the, you know, the door being moved up to be flush with the building. And, you know, luckily, we realized that, again, there is existing brick paving that is three feet basically extend out from the, from the building, the face of the building. And, and so, and we, we do have a patch of stained concrete with a stamp, with a, with a stamp of the old logo of the business that we need to, basically redo that. So, so, so that way, we would basically just do that part of the, of the, of the paving to be, to be a new paving with a stained color to differentiate with the rest of the, the sidewalk so that people won't accidentally bump into the door. So, so that's, that's what we propose to do. In regard to, if you go to the blade sign drawings, I believe we have a drawing for the blade sign. The blade sign currently we propose is a, is a 30-inch diameter blade sign. And they are actually just under five square feet, the area wise. And our, the letter, of the, the letter of the, of the, of the logo, the biggest one is 10, and then it's four, and then it's go down to like one and a quarter. Which I believe it, it should comply with the- Oh, um, which I believe it, it, it should comply with the graphic standard for the blaze sign. So that, that's all I got.
Thank you. I will open it up, uh, for, is there anyone out there that is trying to call that has, would like to make a comment or question for, that's from the general public? Hearing none, I'll open it up to, uh, our board for questions or comments.
This is Kerry. I just have a question. So you mentioned that, uh, the section of sidewalk in front of the doors is going to be replaced. Is that going to be, is it going to be stained? Proposing to put back in its place? Okay.
Yes. Yes, that's correct.
And it will end at the same, uh, position as the brick, three feet outbound from the, okay?
Yes.
Other questions or comments?
How far does that detail to, uh, extend north and south?
It's mostly, um, it mostly, uh, is right in front of the door of the main entry. So if you look at this slide here. I'm sorry?
Can you go back to the elevation so we can?
Sure.
Yeah. This, the one you want to see or which one do you want to see Kerry?
Uh, that, yeah. You don't have that in perspective, do you, on the street or no? Is it just an elevation?
Yeah, we do have that, that's correct.
Okay, there you go. There you go.
It's very subtle, obviously, but you can kind of see that right in front of the door.
So it looks like it extends to the outer limit of the, I want to call them beams, beams, but the black structural element, uh, that's beyond the doors. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
My, my only comment on using stained concrete is, uh, just be cognizant of the fact that if it gets damaged, it's really hard to, to get fixed and make it look right. I, I would recommend at least look at like an alternative brick or granite cobble or something that is easy to walk on. You obviously don't want someone to trip, but it's just more durable. So. Uh, I mean, in this climate where it could be a snowplow or something getting, you know, someone out there with a shovel chipping it away. If they, if they damage it, it's just, it's hard to make it look right again. So I would.
Okay. Okay.
With the logo stamped in it?
Yes.
Oh, and, and the door or the old one?
You mean in the existing, uh?
That's what I heard.
Correct?
Oh, the existing pavement. Oh, I'm sorry.
Old logo, the old logo of the, of Avita.
Well then, could you use black pavers? It looks like black, black. Kerry is right. It's, it's gonna spall off there pretty quick.
I would consider an Endicott paper like they used at the state, uh, Supreme Court building, the Riverside. Extremely durable.
The brick paper, like a, like a black, like a dark color?
It's really, it's not quite black, but it's really, really dark gray.
It's very close. Yes. And it would be a contrast to what's there.
Yeah, I think we can do that.
Yeah. And.
Okay.
Lay it in normal and, and that, and that would be respectful of the existing condition.
Yeah. It's still high up the entrance to the building, which is cool.
Yeah, I agree.
Any other comments?
Could you, uh, go back to the, uh, site plan? No. No, this one. Yeah, because, uh, I want to revisit, uh, a point that, uh, or a question that Frank raised regarding the door swing. And the response that other doors on the, on the facade of the, the building. Um, if you look closely, the portion that, um, your space is gonna be in is closest to that, um. Setback line or property line where the other facades are set back much more than that area. I just want to know if anybody sees that as problematic still, because I was curious about the distance from there to the, uh, tree grate as well.
This is Kerry. Uh, I, I think what, well, I think what, um. Less worried about it is I love the green doors. So I think if you're walking on the sidewalk, the entrance to this building really does stand out. I mean, you've got the change of pavement. And it's a completely different color than the rest of the facade. So. Uh, I'm not saying it's impossible that somebody could be walking into the brick. I think it's more likely that they're gonna stay on the concrete sidewalk. I think you've got enough visual clues that there, there's, you know, there's, that thing might open that I'm, I'm not personally worried about it.
Good point.
Yeah, I, I think it's good, Pasquale, you know, especially since the red, the line you were talking about, that's the right of way line. So, uh, I suspect right of way line is, is the edge between the brick and the concrete. And, you know, the right of way line is essentially their ownership. So the swing actually occurs within. Property ownership as opposed to the public right of way. I, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. We've done as much as we can do, I think.
Okay.
Any other comments?
I'm good.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the application. As submitted with, I'm sorry. I, I move that we approve the, uh, application with the following condition. That the, um, pavement, uh, change. Uh, in front of the main entrance be accomplished through, uh, dark, near-black, uh, pavement brick in the same pattern as, uh, exists today.
Motion, do we have a second?
Seconded.
It's motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Kerry, aye.
Squaw, aye.
Frank, aye.
Kiony, aye.
And Steve, aye. Motion is unanimous. Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
New application, fifteen seventy-one to fifteen sixty-five North Fourth Street. Patrick?
Yep. The applicant is proposing, uh, this is another one that has, uh, uh, zoning adjustments and a site plan associated with it, but I'll go through that. Um, as it, as it comes up. The applicant is proposing to extend the existing patio located on the northern portion of the site to the west, which results in the elimination of the existing parking lot. The patio will feature new asphalt paving that will be flushed with the sidewalk and fencing will be built with the black square two posts that match the existing conditions. The new patio will result in elimination of a curb cut, but will be filled flush with existing condition. Additionally, a six-foot wood privacy fence will be installed on the western portion of the site. Variances include reducing the number of required parking spaces from ten to zero. Planning is generally supportive of the proposal, but requests additional landscape screening on the west and south of the patio and planter boxes on the north elevation. The university district plan recommends outdoor space complement the indoor spaces and new construction minimize the impact on adjacent properties. Therefore, planning recommends additional landscaping be implemented on the site in adherence to plan guidelines. Additionally, the plan recommends parking variances be considered on the potential impact on adjacent uses. The bars located in the area that is heavily accessed by foot travel and public transportation. It is believed that the reduction in parking will not have a negative impact on nearby businesses, but staff request that the applicant provide additional bike parking on site. Or in the adjacent right of way in coordination with the Department of Public Service. Staff recommends support for the variances. And then, staff recommends. Uh, approval with conditions, with the conditions being the additional landscape be included to the west and south of the patio and planter boxes on the north elevation. And the second condition being provided three U-lock bicycle racks with coordination from the Department of Public Service.
Patrick, this is Kiony. Just to understand staff's position, you mean outside of the fence, I'm assuming for the landscaping?
That's the exact question I had, Kiony.
Uh, well, I guess. I was, for the planter boxes, I think I was actually envisioning it to be on the inside, but that's up for, uh, I guess, board to, to discuss. But my recommendation is certainly enhance landscaping.
Yeah, I think that fence needs to be set back and their vegetation needs to be on the exterior also.
I got a question. So I see the building, um, the building face, and then it looks like you've got a stippled area before the fence. What is that stipple area? Is that concrete or is that, is that?
Are you talking about right here?
Yeah, what it?
That's, uh, the existing patio concrete.
Okay, so.
So, yeah, I, I can pull up the existing conditions.
Okay.
Jar. Yep. So they're looking to extend this and eliminate this curb cut right here.
Okay.
And then it's Daniel on, I believe, yeah, Dan.
Hi, guys.
He wants to add.
Dan, please let me get this sworn in. And Daniel, do you swear affirm the testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. Uh, do you want to respond to a couple of comments or, or give your, uh, presentation?
Hi, everybody. How you guys doing? Um, when I saw the staff recommendations for more vegetation, more landscaping and more bike parking. To put it bluntly, I was ecstatic. That's what I want to do. The fact that you're going to make me do it is great. That's how I want the patio to look anyways. Um, so if you're telling me to put even more work into this and have the place look better, I will gladly do it.
Well, this is Kerry. I tell you one thing I would consider, um.
Yes, sir.
They, they actually make some really handsome planters that fit over the top rail of your fence.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
Okay, so I'm recognizing that they're a pain in the butt to take care of. You gotta water every day. You gotta buy. And, but, but they can really be handsome and then you're in the patio space.
Yeah, I, that's what I was envisioning as well. Uh, and we have bartenders around here every day and they already water the flowers every day. So they're just watering more flowers.
Okay.
Other comments or questions from commissioners?
I do have one comment. If we can go back to the, um, Google Earth images that you guys just pulled up on the front of the bar on Fourth Street. There is already a bike rack there. Would you like me to put more in?
Patrick, did the city? The quantity, I don't recall. How many additional bike racks to put in?
I recommended three additional bike U-locks. So that'd be a total of six spaces. It currently meets code though.
If you could fit three more in there, if you go down the street a little bit. Okay, go, go.
I was, I was mad. They probably right here.
Uh.
But yeah, uh, just do it in coordination with the Department of Public Service.
Other questions or comments, feedback?
How, how many parking spaces are we losing again?
Ten spaces. Reduction from ten to zero.
Well, you, you mean from required or, or actual, there's ten now.
Um, Dan, do you know exactly?
I do. From required, we have. From required, the patio population on there, we were required to have ten. Right now, there's three. We are losing the curb cut as well, so we will add two more spaces on the street. So we're really going from. Three spots to, to one spot that we're missing.
So you're, you're, you are, uh, eliminating three off-street parking spaces and then your patio requires the addition of how many parking spaces?
Five.
Five?
Correct.
And five plus three is eight. So what's ten, Patrick?
The, uh, parking, DZA told me to go for ten, just in case something happened and we did math wrong. That they didn't want me to have too little number than too big of a number. And I said, okay.
Well, well, how about nine and a half? Uh, what?
I have no idea.
Okay, but the bottom line is, forgetting all that, is we're, we're losing three, three off-street parking spaces. And as you point out, uh, potentially adding two on-street parking spaces because you're eliminating the curb cut, correct?
That's correct. Correct.
You, you know, an issue that's never been raised before, uh, wait, go, hang on for a second. Move, move the image to the right. Nobody has ever, either at the area commission or in this committee, talked about the adjacent residential properties. Have you been in contact with those folks?
I have. The first one is the former owner of the bar who I talk to probably on a weekly occurrence. The one next to it is my property.
So you have letters of support from the previous owner?
Uh, he's the one who had this approved back in two thousand and seven. That was approved by everybody all the way up to the city. He never acted on it due to the fact of the economic downturn and didn't have the money to actually complete the project that was approved. Um, so yes, I do have his support. I can get a letter for it, but the fact that he is the one who already got it approved, I would, um. I would love to stick with that.
And are we, we? Tonight or just support for variances?
Both.
Yep, both, if you can. Yes, both.
E- e- even though I'm, I'm, I'm. Speech earlier, right? I'm, I'm doing something differently now. Is that right? Uh, well, if we, if we want to talk about design, I, the thing I don't like about this, I don't like your wood fence. It's not very architectural.
Um, the wood fence along the south side, I have already had a plan to put only Ohio license plates up on there. To have some sort of art feature there, a whole artist. Um, and any insight you guys have, I'm not the creative type. I will gladly take any insight you guys have of what could work to make it fit in with the neighborhood better because that's not my forte. I can run a bar.
Well. If, if there's need for us to approve a design tonight just to support the variance, why don't we do that? And, and why not?
I would, I would love if you guys could do everything because with the stuff going on with COVID nineteen, I would like this patio to be open yesterday and have everything approved.
Kerry, do you have any thoughts on, on this fence?
Uh, so, can you, can you zoom out a little bit so we can see how this fits in the context of the thing? Okay, so the wood fence is gonna go on two sides of it, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, uh. You're obviously proposing to put the license plates on the, on the inside toward, they're facing the patio, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, honestly, the only, the biggest concern that I have about the wood fence, I think the license plate could be kind of a cool thing. Um. Typically, wood privacy fences like this, you put the nice exterior to the, your neighbors, not to the interior. You're kind of doing the opposite. So, which I get as it relates to the, uh, to the license plates. Uh, although quite frankly, you could put them in between the posts. I mean, it can still work. Uh, my, my only concern is what it would look like from your neighbor's front yard. I mean, as you go further back past the front elevation of his house, I'm less concerned with it. But you're gonna see fair proportion of this fence kind of protruding out, outboard towards the street, uh, from the patio. And that is a, that is a bit of a concern. Did you consider all, uh? Did you consider at all taking the metal fence, the decorative metal fence and around and then only having wood fence at the backside?
I would love to do that.
Or, or Kerry, or Kerry, just part the way back. At least the amount of return to the building over on the right there.
Building. I agree. Yeah. I mean, that's a bit of a weird transition, but.
Well, better is a straight line transmission, transition than at a corner. The corner is odd.
That's fair. That's fair. Yeah, I think you either go to the back corner to where you only have one panel section of wood fence or to Frank's point, you at least take it back to the, to the front elevation of his house and then you transition to wood. And, and I'm.
Yeah, like I. I love both those ideas. I prefer the metal fence all the way back because I think it'd be. I prefer the metal fence all the way back because I think it'd be easier for me to do. But both of them work in my book, and I think they will look a lot better.
Well, look, if you did the metal fence all the way back and you only had the 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 wood fence at the back kind of piece of the property, if you're if you're willing to to do the the flower box, it would be way better looking. So now you've got a lower at least in the summer months, and it's more attractive in the winter as well. So I'd be.
Neighbor man. That's.
Yeah, that's. Yeah, yeah. That's kind of my concern.
Side note on those neighbors, they are all my bartenders. So.
Yeah, today, today.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Yeah, okay. So how how about just return the same amount is returned on the right? With one section.
Oh, okay.
But but Frank, if you did two, you're you're at the front elevation of the house.
Two is better. No, he's better. You're right, Kerry. No question. Two. And then and then with regard to the fence, I have two comments. One is the only way to make a fence look architectural is for sorry, but the best way in this instance is the top needs to be level. You know, there's there's variation in the grade, right? And it's not apparent when you stand there, but it's certainly apparent when you build something. And I would hate for this fence to to slope with any kind of grade. I would like to see the top of the fence be level. When I say level, I don't mean sort of level. I mean dead level.
Yeah, but frankly, I I think we need detailed drawings of fence.
Well, I I I what I'm thinking, Pescu, though, if this is if this is just a plain board fence, I I don't necessarily need a detail for that as long as it's level. But but my next comment, maybe you're going to say, because I think it would look better if it had a top framing piece.
That's that's my, that was my point, Frank. Yep. That's why I think.
I I don't know what Kerry, I don't know what Kerry Kehoney thinks. I don't want to, or Steve, I don't want to, you know, hog this. I'm just. Yeah.
Now, that that would certainly look more architectural, Frank. The fact that this is a commercial use, this is someone's backyard, then I think appropriate. So.
I guess the only thing I would add is I hear these sort of applicants concerned. Well, I have mixed feelings about, um, adding bar capacity right now in a pandemic. I also understand the applicant's desire to, um, maintain his business by sort of, um, meeting the challenges at hand. So I guess I would suggest that whatever design changes we make are made as conditions to the, um, yeah, as conditional approval items.
Tony, I I think if we can agree that he would make the top of the fence level, that he would, uh, bring, return the metal fence, uh, maybe this is a motion. Do you want me to just do that?
Do it. Let's start in order. We got to do the parking reduction motion first.
All right, all right. Well, somebody else do that.
So do we have a motion for approval for the parking variance, the parking reduction?
This is Kerry. I make a motion. We approve the variance, the parking variance. Parking variance.
Kehoney, seconded.
That's a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, Frank.
Kerry, aye.
Squali.
Kehoney, aye.
Steve, aye. That's unanimous. That motion for the parking reduction has been approved. Now to the second, the building alteration, do we have a motion for approval for the?
Oh, I I move that we.
Frank, you're the you're the one that's fussy about level fences, so that's all you.
I'm doing it. I I I move we approve the application with the following conditions. That the, um, uh, transition from the metal fence to the wood fence be, uh, returned to, uh, two two fence spaces to the, uh, to the south on the, uh, west edge of the of the project, uh, such that the front yard of the house, um, it'll be coincident with the front yard of the house and the and the wood fence starts in line with the front of the, uh, existing house. And that the, uh, fence be installed such that the top, uh, line of the fence, no matter what the grade is, be level and continuous, not stepping in one, uh, continuous level line. And that, uh, a, uh, one by six, uh, trim horizontally be placed with a, uh, horizontal trim cap, uh, on top of that, uh, to, uh, on both sides of the fence to, uh, give it a finished appearance and that staff review and approve the modifications.
Then it's a motion. Do we have a second?
Kerry, second.
That's a motion in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Squali, aye.
Kehoney, aye.
Kerry, aye.
And Steve, aye. Motion is unanimously approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
The next case before us is twenty forty-three to twenty fifty-seven Waldick Avenue. Patrick, you want to give us the rundown?
Yep. Yep, pretty similar, uh, to this last, excuse me, to this last case. Um, sorry, actually, actually, the Waldick Avenue. They are, uh, they removed the application. So we're on to the the last.
Okay.
Uh, legend item, um, twenty-one sixty-nine North High Street.
Yep.
Yep. So, uh, same situation or similar situation to what we just discussed. But the library bar is located at twenty-one sixty-nine North High Street and is currently zoned C four commercial uses. The applicant is proposing to install an eight hundred square foot patio where two parking spaces are currently in place. The patio will be enclosed by fencing and be an extension of the current patio space at the rear of the building. The required number of parking spaces will be reduced from twenty-nine to twenty-seven to accompany the proposed patio expansion. This merely includes the site plan, materials, and pictures of existing conditions. Staff recommends support. The University District Plan recommends that outdoor spaces complement indoor dining and drinking uses rather than be the primary focus and serve as a reasonable extension. The proposed patio is an extension of the currently existing patio. Additionally, the plan recommends parking variances be considered on the potential impact on adjacent uses. The bar is located in an area that is heavily accessed by foot travel and public transportation. It's believed that the reduction in parking will not have a negative impact on the nearby businesses. Staff recommends support for the variances and staff recommends approve, uh, for the site plan.
Thank you. Mr. Quinn Allen?
Yes, uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, okay.
Do you swear affirm the testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, please, uh, go ahead and continue.
Uh, good evening, everyone. I'm the Quinn Allen, the owner of the library bar as of January. That, uh, seemed to be a heck of a time to burst onto the bar scene, uh, before COVID hit. But, uh, as we're seeing, uh, outdoor seating is coming at a premium, uh, for the livelihood and safety for our operation, um, as it pertains to just the livelihood and health of the business and the health of the patrons within. So as you can see in the pictures, that's the proposed as it lines up, uh, budding up to our existing patio. But we look to, uh, remove and remake all of the fencing to be level with what is, uh, detailed in the plan, which will, uh, be a powder coated steel, um, fence line, as you can see here. So it's going to be all made to match, ripping down what's existing to enclose the rest of the patio. So matches up nice, makes the back of the building look nice, even though it's on a back alley. Our goal is always to make the aesthetics look very pleasing and, uh, just kind of help keep the intact the legendary landscape of this building.
Thank you. Uh, open it up to committee members for questions.
For all the numbers, you know, uh, parking variances, what's all the specifics, please?
Frank, it's a reduction from twenty-nine spaces to twenty-seven. The two spaces that are, uh, being reduced are kind of shown right here. Um, this is currently existing parking spaces that will be taken up by an extension of patio.
But wouldn't the number go up slightly if you were expanding the patio?
I apologize, Kerry. What was that?
I said, doesn't the required number go up if you expand the patio? So it's not what's required now, but if you expand a patio, that's going to, I mean, I'm not saying that to be negative, but isn't.
Yes, it does.
I believe I have those numbers if you want me to jump in for what's required now versus what it'll go to with the patio.
Go ahead.
Believe rate is twenty-nine of forty-two. And then it will go to twenty-seven, forty-seven, uh, that are required with the, uh, changes, eating the two up and then the additional five that were required for the additional space.
And those parking spaces are all yours?
Oh, we have, it's mixed. We have nine parking spaces that are a part of our lease that we have for the whole back lot, which is the lion's share of that entire back parking. We share with Domino's Cottage Inn, uh, Jimmy John's and, uh, Chop Shop, and most of it is for employee parking since all those businesses are delivery service. So there's just tagged for their delivery drivers. Ours is the only ones that actually have additional for patrons. And, uh, for us, we're not really trying to advertise that we want patrons driving to the bar as, uh, we just don't think driving to a bar is a necessity with the ride sharing and mass transit and the walkable distance of the establishment.
Driving to a bar is fine. Driving home from a bar is not.
There you go.
Correct.
We see the site plan again, please.
Yep.
And is that sound accurately in the site plan? Well, not really. It's just a line.
Right here.
Okay, there are posts being shown.
Can you zoom in a little more, Patrick?
Yep.
Okay.
I can go one more if you need me to, but.
That's good. So my only comment, I think, at least to start is, uh, I noticed in the existing conditions photographs, you've got these bollards that, uh, are intended uh, air conditioner units and the gas meters at the back of the building. Are those going to be taken out? Are they going to remain? Or is there a plan for that?
So the already has the, uh, process of getting the units. Those are both very old. Our air conditioning hadn't worked until we had a unit replaced on the interior of the building, but those are planned to go onto the roof. And for the time being, for when they're on the, uh, ground, we're going to put a temporary fence around them just to block off because we've had issues as it stands right now because it's an open area and it's a back little nook that's dark at night. We find trash collecting back there. People hanging out. We actually had an air conditioning unit go down because somebody sat on the metal grate and it collapsed into the fan. So it's a definitely a problematic area that we're looking forward to take care of just so we can actually not worry about our air conditioning going out in these ninety degree summer days.
That's good. What about the, what about the gas meters, the bollards of the gas meters? Are those going to remain?
So the gas meters aren't on that side. It's only, uh, air conditioning, two air conditioning units. The gas meters are actually enclosed within the, uh, existing patio.
I thought it was something interesting. It was.
Any other questions or comments?
One question. I just noticed that note regarding that exterior stair. Is the basement of the of the bar used as as bar?
Yeah, there is a bar in the basement and there's a pool table down there.
Okay. You just have to be certain you have an egress, uh, gate on that, um, on that stair.
Yeah, if you go to the the current photos, there is a gate installed on the stair.
Doing nothing other than putting fence up. Is that correct?
Correct.
I see, yeah.
Any other comments or do we have a motion for approval? For the parking reduction?
Oh, I move we support the parking reduction.
Kerry, seconded. Seconded.
That was a motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Kerry, aye.
Guy.
Guy.
Kehoney, aye.
Steve, aye. I think that was unanimous.
Yep.
So that motion is approved and then for the exterior building or fence, uh, do you have a motion on that application?
Does it match that existing fence there?
No, we are taking down the existing fence to match the forty-two inch height level, so it'll be matching all the way across.
Good, good.
Yeah, we we got a lot of OCD in the ownership.
Okay, throw a little OCD.
I hear that.
Do we have a motion for approval?
This is Kerry. I make a motion to approve.
Squali, seconds.
It's a motion in second. Is there any discussion? Very none. All in favor, say aye.
Frank, aye.
Squali, aye.
Kehoney, aye.
Kerry, aye.
Steve, aye. Motion is unanimously approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Awesome.
Next, staff approved applications. Are there any questions for staff for the approved applications? If there are no questions, I think we need a motion for approval for the staff issued application, approved applications.
So moved.
This is Kerry. I make a motion to approve the staff applications, staff approved applications.
Frank was seconded.
Moving second, all in favor, say aye.
Kerry, aye.
Squali, aye.
Guy. Kehoney, aye.
Steve, aye. Motion is approved. Any new business?
Nope, none. No old business either.
Any old business?
No business at all.
Okay. Motion to approve, motion to adjourn, excuse me.
So moved.
That's second. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Thanks. Thank you, guys. See you soon.